This conference will now be recorded.
We're gonna, okay, so this is always where it gets odd. So what I'm gonna do is open up this special session of the City of Port Orford Council Meeting, because we have to open a regular, we have to open the regular meeting. So I'm just opening the regular session so we can open the executive session. So Thursday, October 17th, 5:04, October 17th, 2024 at 5:04. Do a quick roll call just before the, the motion to go in. So Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Pogweds?
I'm here.
Counselor Valisis?
I'm here.
Counselor Webb? Counselor Tidy? And Counselor Rask? Okay, so I'm pretty sure Brett is here, but I didn't hear you Brett and...
Yeah, Web present electronically.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so everyone except for Counselors Tidy and Rask are present. After the roll call there, we're gonna open up executive session under ORS 1926602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations and ORS 1926602I to review and evaluate the employment-related performance of chief executive officer or any public body, a public officer, employer, staff member who does not request an open hearing. Okay. Yeah, get a quick second, okay. Are you good with that by consensus? Yeah, I know, I've never cleared on if we do it or not, but that's all right. We do it at the port and then we don't and then...
I mean, you kind of explain the whole thing.
Right, and that's the main thing. Getting the ORS out there and making sure we open the meeting first before we went into executive session. So we're not recording.
This conference will now be...
Okay, so to be official, we left executive session at 5:48. I said 6:48 before, so it's recorded correctly.
Then we're gonna make a motion, Dr. Please.
Well, yeah, once we, I just wanted to get out of executive session so we could be out while people, before the people got in and then, yeah, we will be, yeah, Diana will be guiding us through that one. So we can do a nice "so moved" if people want to.
Greg arrived also. Sidney, you might want to acknowledge that you arrived because Kat did the...
Oh, right, yeah, and I can do the roll call for this one too. Okay, so...
Are we ready to go, Joseph?
You got the recording going.
Yeah.
It's unlocked, people are in, I think we are good to go.
Okay, so we're gonna go back into executive session, it's 5:05. We are in regular session, I'm gonna do a quick roll call again just because it changes a little bit. Counselor Tidy? Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Pogweds?
Tim, yes.
Counselor Valisis?
Yes.
Counselor Webb?
Web present electronically.
And Counselor Rask? Okay, so Counselor Rask is still absent. Myself, Mayor Pat Cox, City Administrator Melissa Radcliffe and Joseph Harrison are here. I always get crossed up with the port meetings and the city meetings as far as roll call.
Pretty easy to do.
Okay, and we just came out of executive session under ORS 192.6602D. We were conducting labor deliber, uh, conducting deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. I believe we have some action taking out of that, so I'm gonna pass it over to our attorney, Diana Moffett.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. As per the executive session, I would ask that the council and mayor move to ratify the tentatively agreed to collective bargaining agreement for the Port Orford Police Union effective July of 2023 through June of 2026. And I'll let you take the vote.
So moved.
All right, so we got a...
Second.
First and second on that. I don't believe we can have any discussion, so I will call for the vote. Counselor Webb?
Web, yes.
Counselor Pogweds?
Tim, yes.
Counselor Valisis?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Tidy?
Yes.
All right, thank you Diana and, and the other...
Thank you, Mayor. What I'll do is I'll get the final agreement, I believe you have it, Mayor, to sign, either you or Melissa can sign it, and then we will close this matter. And I thank you all very sincerely for your work and consideration on this matter as well as the police union. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana.
Thank you.
I will, I will leave this meeting unless you need me to stay for anything else.
Uh, not unless for your own personal enjoyment.
Thank, thank you, Mayor.
Have a good night, Diana.
You as well, bye bye.
Okay, yeah, as long as you're on clock. So we're out of the executive session. As far as additions to the agenda, we do have one historical preservation committee had something for us that just kind of, we've had some staffing shortages and definitely wanted to get them on the, on the agenda. I know we don't like doing it last minute, but this is, this is different because we had some issues. The minutes, they're gonna be available next month, correct, Joseph? So we don't need to worry about that on the consent calendar. And then the special session we need to consider for the 14th, we can talk about it at the end of the meeting after we talk about it more.
I'll explain it either during planning or at the end of the meeting.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so we're gonna have to add the historical preservation. I don't believe it's, does it need an action tonight?
Well, we want to both, yeah.
Okay, so here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna put you under presentations, which is up next, and then if there's an action item, we're gonna put that under 12B, new business. If that's okay with everybody. By consensus, I see.
Can we put something on without it coming out to the public?
Yes.
For now, okay.
Yes.
Can we also add to, in addition to the agenda, which is I know Greg is here from planning and has, doesn't have a lot of time, can he just make a presentation during?
Oh, so he doesn't have to wait till the planning, uh, report? We can do whatever we want, I make the agenda.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, what's your timeline like, Greg? Sorry, historical preservation committee, you just got ousted. Come on up, please.
Me?
Yes. Yeah.
Maybe it won't even take that long.
Okay, and this is, this, well, it's a planning report that's going to relate to Teddy.
So we're, the planning commission is in the middle of going through our planning codes. We had that DLCD grant for housing and we've made some progress. We had talked about a, a workshop with you guys and it looks like that's not gonna happen due to time and all the work involved for Crystal and all that, but I want to be here and I want to tell you what we're doing. And I've got a little thing, handout I'm gonna give you when I'm done talking. So I want to just give you a little overview of what we've been doing, take a few minutes. And you can call me and I will meet with any of you about this. It's, this is, I know you've been in the zoning code, it's tricky, there's a lot of stuff. You affect one thing, it affects a lot of things.
Not to interrupt, but we cannot, I don't think all, like, we can't make a quorum through another person either.
No, 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 just one at a time.
Okay, yeah, but I mean, just that conversation, that's why you have to have workshops and meetings is because of that angle of, and especially between planning and city council. I'm not trying to dissuade anything, but it's really easy to get a quorum that way if a couple of us call.
Right. And, and this is legislation, so we're free to talk.
Okay, good, it's nothing that we're gonna be deciding on on a later date.
Nothing to do with a hearing.
Okay, sorry, I, yeah, I just tiptoe on that stuff. Perfect.
Legislative, because we're gonna, we're gonna put it together, we're gonna give it to you, you're gonna vote on it, we're just making a recommendation is all we're doing.
Okay.
So I know a lot of stuff about it, Crystal knows more, but I'm willing to, to work with you about, if you've got questions. So, brief overview, I'm just gonna kind of read this. Some definitions were added to, added or updated to conform to the new state laws. So the state laws have changed definitions, single-family dwelling is now a single-household dwelling, just simple stuff like that. There's also redefining manufactured dwelling, manufacturing dwelling park, mobile home. The, the codes are changing and our, our stuff is pretty old. We're doing away with the minimum size of manufactured homes. So whatever size can comply with the building department will work for us. This, this is our recommendation anyway, we're not... Changing some uses in zones from outright to conditional use, like apartments, or they're now called multi-household dwellings in 2R, which they've always been allowed, but we're changing it to be a conditional use in those places so we can look at the plans and so forth a little closer. Residential care facilities are conditional uses now, or they were proposing that. Certain childcare facilities and residential care facilities are required to be allowed in all zones where people live by state law, so we're adding that. Accessory dwelling unit code, we're adding the possibility to have accessory dwelling units. They'll be allowed in all zones that have dwellings. They can be attached or detached. They must be on property with a single residential unit. They be the maximum 600 square feet size. They may use the same water and sewer street connections as a primary dwelling if the size is allowed by plumbing, by the plumbing code. The, the SDC and water bill charges are up to you guys, how you want to work that out. But we don't see the reason to dig up the street for something that doesn't need to be dug up. RV park is a new section using state laws and other municipal codes that reflect the experience that we had with the RV park on Madrona last year. We didn't have anything about RV parks in the code. Manufactured dwelling parks are updated with the new Oregon rules. Planned unit developments, PUDs, it's a way to creatively group homes on one property. That's been updated. Conditional use permits will be required in all zones. In residential zones, the size of a property still must include 5,000 square feet per home. We're not changing that. So in R1 and R2, you still have to have 5,000 square feet, whether it's over in that end of the property or whether it's here. PUDs will no longer be required to be three acres. We don't have a lot of three acre plots sitting around. And so part of the idea of this is to get affordable housing or workforce housing, to increase density where densities make sense and, and not where it doesn't make sense. Procedures for the permitting process for PUDs are getting brought into current practice. There are more complete rules for home occupation and procedures for staff review of them. Planning considered, we've considered rules for cottage cluster or cottage residential, but they're basically PUDs, so we just avoided duplicating pages of stuff. It's, a cottage cluster can work with what we've got. And then shifting slightly, we updated the existing conditional use permit extension, which is on the back of this piece of paper I'm gonna give you. But it highlights a two-year initial permit with three possible one-year extensions with application fee, documentation to be submitted and justification of an extension, absolute maximum five years. Also a section on circumstances for city revocation of permit. And the full text is, is here. The complete changes are in the packet on the city website. So the document we've been working from is on the city website under planning for last month from the October 8th PC meeting. I've noted that on here. Our timeline, November, review a member, review amendments for laws and, and the recommendations we're making, prepare for the public notice mailing. December will be our final PC, our planning commission workshop. You're all invited to come to that. And if you read this stuff and you come up with some ideas, you can talk to me about it and you can come to the meeting and we'll be voting on the final, we'll be dialing it all in. January will be the planning commission public hearing, so we'll be sending out a mailing for that. And then February or March will be the city council public hearing and finalizing the documents. And in April will be the council adoption. And that'll be the end of the, of the grant. There's one other issue that was brought to my attention a few days ago that I think we could and we should deal with, and that's water. So in the 10MU, our code says sewer and water shall be provided by the city of Port Orford. That's because the code was updated recently, fairly recently. The rest of the code, it just says provision, provision of sewer and water. Sewer, oh, that's the 10MU. Okay, so the rest of the code, all the, all the zones, just say provision of sewer and water. Sewer service shall be provided by the city of Port Orford. So it leaves the water off, so which is why we have all this issue about are people gonna pay if they have a well? So...
How many wells do we have in the 10MU zone? He's talking about the other zones.
I'm talking about the other zones. 10MU is the one that does say you have to have city water.
I know, that's, yeah, sorry, different subject.
Whether you want to use it or not is another question, but you, I know that, I know that our water would be nice to have.
And not to get sidetracked, I'm just talking about new buildings in the 10MU that want to get well. So are we telling them that we can't let you do that in the 10MU zone?
No, you have to pay for the city water regardless of having...
That's the fix we did during curtailment.
That's what our code says, our code says they had to pay STCs when the moratorium's lifted.
Exactly.
Correct.
Exactly, so that's...
This is, this would be, this was the problem at some point when, when there was the thing going on where we had, where Crystal was saying we were having this problem where it wasn't clear.
Right, this would clarify, this would clarify and kind of shorten, bring everything together and it would, it'll shorten you the, it'll, it'll clear it up, basically.
So basically, we're telling the people that put wells in, they can't use them?
No, we're saying you can put well in, but you still have to pay for your city water hookup.
Right, and that's what our current code says.
Not, not outside of 10MU.
I thought our, the one we voted on several months ago said that when the moratorium was lifted, they had to pay the SDC fees.
Yes, that, that did, but I guess this thing that you're...
So this is, this is in zoning, we're talking about zoning now, so that everybody, this is, this is what you, what you did was make an arrangement because it wasn't in zoning. So it, it would be a kind of maybe a duplication, if you want to call it that, but it makes everything the same in every zone.
Updates the zoning code.
Exactly. So if you would like, if you give us kind of, just if you give us a, like, if you give me an idea that that's something you'd like us to look at, we will look at, at putting that in. I just, and they're probably, it's, since it's not covered under the grant, I'll tell you, it probably will cost a little bit of money, but it'll be, it can piggyback on the one we're doing. So it's not a separate mailing, Crystal said it probably wouldn't cost much money. But if you want to do it, we, this is the time to do it. So... I'm here, so I see some heads kind of nodding.
Like, changing these things is literally like pulling teeth, so we do want to nip off as much as we can.
It's basically, it's basically all the things in the, in the zone, I seem to remember this from the past that that's like, it just would make it all, make them all the same.
That's right, so the 10MU now says sewer, provision of sewer and water. Sewer and water shall be provided. In the other zones, it only says sewer shall be provided. There's some other small language, but that's basically what, what it is that amounts to. There's like three parrot, there's three sections on that, the water line hookups and all that. None of that would change, it's just that, it's just saying, so you know, you, if you buy property, you're gonna be expected to get water in the city. You're gonna be expected to hook up to city water. And I've heard that's a good idea from the people who are in the, know about the water system. Yeah. So I, I...
And they're paying into the system of hydrants and restaurants and...
Yes. So I'm guessing that what we will do, since I see some heads nodding, at least a couple heads, we will go ahead and put it in. If you don't want it, you can just pull it out when it comes to the time, when it comes to you guys. It's not gonna be a, a big deal.
It seems like we should be in agreement from what we've already done.
Yeah, but I thought this was gonna be more of just a presentation and it's turning into a discussion and it makes me feel...
No, I don't think we...
No, I'm just saying, like, ethics is my number one thing and we can have the best laid intentions, but if we talk in the wrong way, it's not good, especially with hearings and stuff involved. But I wish we could get a report like this, you know, every month, yeah, I mean, that's awesome, that's great. It's just the deliberation of it that makes me a little wormy. That's fine, it's, I'm, I'm not the guy that makes up these crazy rules. This is, I've just been doing it too long and, and like...
I apologize if I've stepped, overstepped.
No, 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 I'm just, it's me being overly cautious because of the nature of planning and people and, and government. It's, that's, but I, I think the report is good, it's just, it's just a planning report. So it's when we started talking about what we, like, when you started asking what we think and looking at head nods, that's when I started.
Well, okay, so let me say, so we were originally asked to do this.
Right.
Because you guys got a grant, you said, will you guys go and look at our zoning? So...
No, and at the end of the day, what you bring to us is gonna get picked apart, for lack of a better term. So like, bring it, bring the plate loaded, knowing that we're probably not gonna eat all the vegetables, but, or maybe not. So, but thank you for working on it so hard, like, this is the hard part of, what? 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 Are you delivering?
Yeah, we are, we're not, we're not, we're trying not to.
I might be wrong, but I'd rather be wrong.
Thank you, Greg. Rick's on my back, so we, I gotta end this up.
That was a, that was a Port Orford City Council meeting, five minutes right there, if there ever was one. Thank you.
Give me one to Perry, give me one and I'll give it to Perry when she...
Oh, you're all right, you're good.
Thank you, Greg.
Well, I think everybody here knows me, I'm Rick Cook, I'm chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission. And I sent you guys all a package a few days ago and I did it again today. I wasn't 100% sure if I'd sent it out, so I wanted to be sure you guys got that. And what we want to do is do a, what's called a reconnaissance level survey of the Hamlet. That's Hamlet Street, there's about 30, originally there was 30 structures in, in the Hamlet built in the 1930s. And what the survey does is we have, we'll hire a contractor and he goes on the street level. We don't go into the houses, we don't even go on the property, take two photos and evaluate the property and whether, and what their historic value is. And that, it's really a simple, simple type survey. It will require the city to get a grant, certified local government grant, and we have a ballpark figure of about $10,000. So what I'm looking for is permission from you guys to pursue the grant and the city manager probably has something to say about this because the city's doing the grant. I understand it's a one-page, really simple grant. I haven't seen the application, I asked for a copy and they, they don't come out till December. And then, and we have December is the beginning of the grant period and it ends the last Friday of February. So there's almost three months of two and a half to three months to get the grant filled out and get it into SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office. And I have a good, we have a good relationship with Currie Gill, a contact at SHPO and she, she'll bend over backwards to facilitate and get this, get this through as easily, as easily as possible. So, any questions?
I think mostly I have a question to Melissa if she feels like she's got the time to do this.
Um, I just, I want to know what the, what the time commitment would be for that because, you know, it's, it's not just writing the grant that is the problem, it's then the management of it. So I have a part-time payroll person, accountant person who has to manage all of it. I have a part-time now, I'm very excited about Ann Heath, who is our financial person. But all of those things and all of that data that has to be figured out to apply for that and then to manage it after the fact, we don't have a lot of time to do that. So I don't know what level this is. Many grants do seem very simple on the surface, but then I don't know the level of detail. I can say that our, our staff is right at capacity with a lot of the grants that we have going. So I would, I would need to know more about what, what the time commitment, what the expectation is for my staff because we, we don't have a lot of time to, to do a lot, some extra stuff like this, although it's very worthwhile. And I understand that, you know, that, that the Historical Society is very interested in learning this. I just, I don't know how extensive the time commitment would be for my staff.
And just for some context, we, we currently have about 10 grants going right now related to water. So, you know, that are probably more complicated, but that's, just so you know, that's, I think, where you're coming from because there's a lot of things that...
Yeah, I understand.
That are going on.
And I'd met with Melissa, she explained that to me too, that there is a timeframe. We, and like I said, the, the grant process, the grant period is from the 1st of December to the end of February, so...
Would you guys envision that you would pretty much write most of the grant?
Well, we would do it, I understand it's really a simple one-page, it doesn't take a grant writer to, to write the grant and Currie Gill will help us fill out the form.
Okay.
But then it's gotta, you have to manage it, like you said.
So like, one question would be, is it like gonna be a lump sum to the contractor? Is it gonna be how many, you know, is it gonna be billed quarterly for six months?
No, no, the project, it's for a project in the period of, I think it starts around April of 2025 and you have until 2026 to get the project done, although I think it only takes a couple, a few days to do it, or at least it comes over for a day or two. And then he does a page on each property or each, each building and, and does an evaluation and takes photos. He has a lot of work at, at, at his office that he does besides come out here. I don't know exactly, we've never done this before, so I don't know. He'll probably spend the night in the motel and that's all covered in his grant. We just asked for a ballpark. If you guys approve that we can pursue the, pursue the grant idea, then I'll ask him for a firm bid because he'll bid it, you know, there won't be any surprises, be ballparked us at 10 grand.
But like, that's another part of it probably is if, if we were gonna enter into a contract, then we have to put it out to bid, so I mean, there's just all the...
Not according to Currie Gill.
No, not according to her, we don't have to put it out to bid.
It doesn't have to, we can pick our, we picked a guy from Grants Pass, Medford area, otherwise...
If it's under 10,000, it's the amount of it too, yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's under 25, I think is what Currie told me.
Okay, well, for our city, it's under 10. It's our procurement policy, I believe, is under 10, so...
Because the other contractors, one's in Washington State in Vancouver and the other one's in Portland. So we thought, and this guy's familiar with Port Orford and the turf. He does, he does this kind of work, he's done for Coos Bay and Banden and all that, so that's one of the reasons. Ann, Jerry and them know him, have worked, because they used to live over there and they had been on the Historic Commission over there and so, in Medford, and had worked with this guy, so...
Well, let's take the staff time and money discussing out of it for a second and just look at what we're trying to do here. We're looking for a report of the Hamlet for historical, you know, inventory to give new opportunities to the buildings there, you know, and so that's the first question. Is it like, as a counselor, are we motivated for that? We, you know, we empower the Historical Commission, they came to this, so it's obviously one of their priorities. So that's the first question, is are we motivated for this to happen? What are the pitfalls of that? We, I know that we've had angry people come in here before when there's whiffs of the Historical Society coming in and taking pictures when we, even though we just heard that it's two pictures on the road. I'm just talking about Port Orford and how people talk, I'm not talking about the reality of anything, so... I think there's, it gives people the opportunity, it's, it's not a bad thing for Port Orford, $10,000 is $10,000. I think there's, it gives people the opportunity. It's, it's not a bad thing for Port Orford. Ten thousand dollars is ten thousand dollars, but because of the nature of this thing and with the tribesmen involved, even with the short window, I think maybe there could be some money generated. Or that's where you put it back on the Historical Committee of like, hey, we're, we're strapped for cash. That's one issue, so we're not going to do it. But we have a lot of volunteers in the community, too, that are grant writers. So if it's easy, maybe they can look at that and say, yeah, it is a one-page report. And there's really not a lot of reporting on the other end of it. It's just, this is what we're paying for. At the end of it, you say, oh, we got what we paid for, and then it's just another one pager. And I'm not saying I want to put.
One check written and.
Right. It's not like this multi-layered thing, and so I don't want to squash anything out of fear of not really knowing. And I'm happy that we have until, you know, that, we got till December and we got a little wiggle room. So you want to leave here with an answer. It just might not be a black and white answer. So I'm trying to find out if everybody is interested in this as a, as an idea because everything else is just a, a detail. It's problems, it's time and money. That's all of our problems. So we got to figure that out anyway. So what do you guys think of the ideas, what I'm asking?
So I read here the benefits. What are the pitfalls? You mentioned pitfalls. What are the pitfalls? Do, will this put any limits on future projects in that district if it became on the register? Like, say, we had to rip the streets up, put new sewer lines, new water lines. We're not going to be restricted.
It doesn't change the status of the property. The person could go out and set a match to it the next day after we take it.
Okay, so that's important.
Those are through the house.
That's important. And we have had people not want to be involved in these things, even though they own historic properties in Port Orford. We've had them sit in that seat right in front of where you're at. So I just want to make sure that if you come across one of those persons in that area, I mean, can they just totally opt out?
Well, I think they could opt out. If they came out of their house and said, how come you're taking pictures?
Yeah. I'm just saying.
The guy would say, okay, fine, we'll go to the next house.
Would, would you think the guy would actually tell, I guess, would we tell people that this survey is going on? I mean, would there be public outreach?
You could tell the survey, tell the people the survey, and it's recommended that after we do the survey, we do a public presentation.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, what we're doing. And, and, and let's say you own one of those houses and you're considering putting it on the National Register.
Right.
This is the first step and the guy says, yeah, this qualifies for the National Register.
Okay.
But it doesn't change the.
But that person's.
Zone or the, of what he can do with his property.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
On the National Register, that's another story. And of course, that takes the planning commission.
Correct.
And it's a much bigger deal.
Correct.
That we're doing on the jail, as a matter of fact, and we're still, I'm still working on that with, with SHPO and, you know, that's, it's that type of, that's a whole different process.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that, I'm sorry, Pac, go ahead.
I won't probably be here when this final discussion happens, but I think that, that putting notices on people's doors is the right neighborly thing to do. You know what I mean? It's an extra, it's an extra three or four hours or even just something on the website or just something where we know we did our due diligence. That's exactly, no, we know it's thirty houses. Yeah, we know it's thirty.
And it's actually not thirty any longer. There's a couple of vacant lots there that are burned down or.
Perfect. Yeah, and I'm, and I'm not trying to put anything on anybody, but it just seems like a good thing to do. Like, that's where we can at least say to the people that are angry, or why are you taking pictures on my street? We put a notice on the door. We tried to, to let everybody know.
Well, I actually have done a, a database that's on the city, and that's what I've done, is gone around taking pictures. I haven't had anybody come out of their house wondering, but I did take a picture of Teresa Colloba.
I used some old photos.
I do, I do know.
I stayed away from her corner.
No, no, we're not getting, we don't say.
I do know that it's come up that, like, when we were working on the brick grant, which is going to, as a priority, actually in that neighborhood, dig up the water lines and replace them because those are the oldest water lines in our town.
Well, they probably are.
And everything. You guys know, right? That one of the things that they did ask us was like, oh, you know, like, any house that's over fifty years old, it's, you know, there, because it's federal funding, it's super, yeah, careful about that. That was like something we had to document and inventory, and I think when we do, when we go through doing it, you know, we're going to have to be super careful about, even though we're not going to anybody's house, you know, there, even though we're just replacing the lines if we get that grant, we're very conscious of it.
And a lot of that is because of the lead service lines, like that other issue we're dealing with. Like, if you're before nineteen fifty, there's, there's a better chance that you have a lead service line or on those old lines, which is what they're really against.
I actually thought it was like historic kind of stuff.
I, that might be historic, too, but I know that's a question from the water angle, too, of pre-nineteen fifty. They have like a hundred percent lead service lines coming out. Not here, not here, but, you know, in the world.
Because I read something recently about.
Having, yeah, no, that, they, cities are being required to check all their service lines. And, and, and I, in Curry County, have never seen a lead service line. I've seen quite a few and usually it's, it's poly pipe or, or copper. Galvanized doesn't do that good, but it's also the Hamlet and it's a hundred years old, so that could be. And, and it's one of those things that, uh, yeah. So I guess what we're looking for is a consensus of interests. You guys have to go knowing that we don't have a solid answer, but we want to support it. And there's these few issues that we got to overcome and, and it might take you shaking the trees to talk to Toe Porter or someone like that to help you fill out that one-page grant and have, to have someone say, no, the reporting on this end isn't going to be that bad. Or just assure us that it's not going to take an inordinate amount of staff time and we got to figure out where the money comes from. And I don't think anybody is adverse to that, knowing that this is just kind of a pre-study to see who would be available to be on the, the National Registry.
Yeah, I think.
If I understood you guys right, then if the, if the estimate is over ten thousand, he has to get other bids. Is that, we have to get other?
We got to nail down that, that, we got to nail down that cop.
I don't see why we couldn't tell the guy that, our contractor that we'd like to have and say, look, you know, if you bid over ten thousand.
Yeah, not to exceed, yeah.
He may go, oh, well, you know, it'll be.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if that's officially an okay thing to do in procurement. You know what I mean?
Really? You can't do that?
I don't, you can?
I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know.
You can say not to exceed, okay, maybe. Yeah, I don't know. But the, I was just going to say, I think the thing that makes sense is when this form comes live, see the application and all the.
Exactly.
Details, then that would be the time to like, maybe help us understand some of these questions. Because I do think that, for me, the big thing is, is wanting to be respectful of the staff time just because of knowing with all of these other grants and we're, that we're in the progress of needing to manage. And this one does sound super simple, so hopefully it'll be.
That's what they tell me.
We could probably look at one from last year or whatever the last cycle was, too, to have a, a bearing on what it, it was, you know.
Well, we've never done this before. We're all learning on the job kind of thing ourselves, you know, and it, because there's discussion about doing the whole Historic Downtown the same way, do the same thing.
So we'd learn from this.
And we would learn from this, yeah. And of course, it would cost more than ten thousand to do the old downtown, but I've already talked to a couple of people that are very interested in doing that.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's, it's just not just the grant writing. It's that whole thing of how, you know, how is it going to be that? How many checks are going to have to get written? How many, how many staff touches is it going to be for?
Well, I think that you just pay the guy off when he's done. I don't think, unless maybe he asks for a deposit. I, I don't know.
Yeah, might be like.
The way I work, though, I do ask for a deposit when I'm doing commissions, but maybe he'll operate different. I don't know.
Well, sometimes the organizations will ask for, Ann ran against it this last week or two with the city administrator, where they had to come up with some answers. How much water did we sell? I mean, reports have to be generated. I don't anticipate them wanting that kind of information, but they might want some information that our staff does have to deal with.
Yeah.
And like Ann said, we just, we.
Each thing is just an additional thing. When eve, even without any grants, there's enough for the city staff to do.
Yeah. Well, I understand that. And Melissa explained that to me when I met with her a couple of months ago. I don't know how long it was.
And just to be the devil's advocate, we have a group of, of people here that are volunteering their time and we want to promote that, too. So we got to remember that because we're always going to have a million things of, to fry and Melissa's always going to have a million things to do. That's why we got to make sure that we don't let her overwork.
Yes.
I kind of feel like we are in the progress, you know, like you're just saying, we're all, you're learning. We're all learning about how better to manage grants and how to be efficient on it. I feel like we're on, we're on that learning curve or the city staff is, I'm on it, we're all on it. And so at this moment, it, there's a little bit of overwhelm going on. And once, once things start to get clear, um, I, I'm hopeful that it will, it'll kind of line up and it won't be so hard. But just what you said, there's, there's things we don't anticipate, so.
Is there anything that anyone can see that would let, make them think that they shouldn't come back to us by December with that application? Or that we're not interested or that there's just not staff time? Is there anything that just shuts this down right now?
I think just a little more information is going to be helpful to all of us.
So the best I can tell you right now is it's not a no and that there is interest and you know what we're, you know what we're up against. And I wish we had a solid answer.
People can send me the application. I actually, I already asked for one and I haven't seen it, so apparently it hasn't been.
And if you want to bring that back to November, or if they can give you one from last year, just so we can see. Just if they can give you one from last year or two years ago and say that this one's pretty similar.
Or even if you, if you're talking to that gentleman who you might want to work with, just ask him, how does he do his billing? And, you know, just so that we could.
Yeah, yeah, we get more information from him.
Well, that and more information about what the group is going to need from a city. What, what questions are they going to ask? What reports are they going to need? Those kinds of things. So the application, once you get that in, obviously, it sounds like it's a simple one, a one-pager. But after that gets in, then, you know, I was just reading through here that they have fifteen days to request additional information. Well, that's very vague. I mean, they could come back with a whole checklist. We could be delivering Christmas presents to all the kids in the world.
Well, what we're doing is, I think they're talking about historic information and we've been doing research. We already have.
Right.
Newspaper articles of who did the building.
Nice. So it'd be more coming from you.
You know, that sort of stuff. So the information.
Yeah, yeah. That's what we want to hear, yeah.
Not the city because I don't think anybody here in the city would know the answers.
Perfect.
And we're learning the answers as we go.
And I think that's how it's supposed to work. I think that's why you have committees, is because there's so many little facets to look at. And, and it's, and we all know, like, we're all concentrating on water. Like, that's our thing. But there's a hundred other facets over here in the city that we have to remember, too. So, so the best answer we can give you is, we got, by consensus, you have support to keep pursuing it. We just need a little more information and.
Satisfactory.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for what you do. We appreciate it. Go ahead.
Yeah.
I agree with you. I not only think we should put it on people's doors, I'm willing to go talk to people when we get to that point and explain it. So, because people tend to.
Just instantly, yeah, it becomes contentious before people even inform themselves. So anything we can do like that proactively is key.
Appreciate it, Diane.
Yeah, and that's the transparency they always talk about in the government that they want us to have, so. Thank you. Have a good night. You can stay for the rest.
Thank you, Bo. You guys are going to miss the popcorn.
Okay, so now we can get to the agenda. Consent calendar. We know that the minutes are going to be here next month. They're not here. Citizen concerns. Do we have any citizen concerns online? Hearing none. Uh, there's no one on the list. Any citizen concerns? All right, moving on to public hearing, we have non-departmental reports. Melissa, anything, uh, high notes outside of your regular reporting?
You know, just continuing on with, uh, finding, finding issues and finding things and trying to solve all the problems, uh, with, with staff and, um, just learning every day, so that's been good. Been happy with personnel. Again, we've brought in John Stackhouse. He's now, uh, in training at the wastewater treatment plant. He has background at, at the Community College in water and wastewater management, so that's awesome. So he is getting back into it. One of the things that we talked about also on personnel is that we needed that oversight, and which is now being provided by our financial consultant, Ann Heath. She's come to Port Orford a couple of times, has worked with, um, our accountant, Dina, and, uh, they work really well together, so I'm excited about what is happening on that front. Like, as mentioned, I have an entire whiteboard full of grants that are in process and in progress and working, CCD and working with Civil West, our, um, engineers and working, um, just with many different groups, uh, to, to complete those things, as well as the, the Community Building Complex Friends. And so that is something that we've been working on for the improvement of the community building, uh, which is a, again, Community Development Block Grant or a CDBG grant. So we're, we're happy about what's happening with all of that. And, uh, you mentioned Toby Porter, our friend Toby. She and her crew have been working to raise, um, four hundred thousand dollars for the American Legion Hall specifically to help with that because those are two separate, uh, projects, remember? So, um, we are working with the architecture firm out of Kuzbay, HGE, and leader of that is Joe Slack, and that's been great. So that, that continues to be a good thing. An update, I put on my thing before about Dede Street, that we've been having trouble keeping that, uh, Dede Street pump working. We've put so many, um, Public Works hours into that to, to try and keep, um, water in those pipes. But after the Ninth Street, um, leak that we had, something has just gone afoul and, and they've been really having to, to hold their tongues right when they're trying to, to get that one to work. The good news is we ordered a, a new pump. The better news is that it, uh, arrived this week. And so now there are plans with our Public Works folks to get that, um, put in, so we're excited about that. Um, I do know that Superintendent John Isador is not available on this call tonight, so I will kind of, that kind of segues into our Public Works, um, update also. I don't have the full update. He didn't get that to me. But, um, he has also been working very diligently on a lead and copper survey, as I believe, um, our, um, Gary Burns, Councilman Gary Burns, mentioned is there is a push at the federal level to, um, remove in a matter of time, uh, lead service pipes. And so we have to check all of that. And so that is something that John Isador has been working on, is getting some of, uh, those pipes checked, doing spot checks. That will continue to need to happen. So, um, we are on that and, um, as Mayor Cox mentioned, um, we don't know of any lead service lines around. So that's, so we're already ahead of the game, um, on the city side on that, so that's really great. Anyway, that, those have been the main things, um, from the administration desk.
And nothing on our new meter from the impound?
There, the, the meter on the impound, thank you for asking. The new meter that we got with grant funding has been installed. However, the area of the pipe where it is installed is not, um, it has too many, uh, clamps and pipes and valves and things on it. It's supposed to have a much longer run to be able to read accurately. In order to do that, Public Works staff is going to need to dig up part of the pipes that's up there and we have not had time to do that because another thing that they did was get a new roof put on that the fellows built up there for the pump house so that our equipment and our pumps and things, uh, coming out of our impound is, uh, protected. So that now is completed and we're excited about that. But yes, the, the monitoring of that new meter, we need to, it is mobile, so it can go to different places and we do need to move it to a better section of pipe. We just have not been able to dig that part up yet in order to.
Melissa, have we been reimbursed for it yet? Because part of the.
No, I don't know that.
Part of the idea was that they were actually going to pay all of the fees. So like, if we had to do any digging or any of that stuff, that the state would have paid for it. So, um, if we are, if we, we already did submit the reimbursement because I thought it was, um, installed correctly. So we will actually be, you know, foregoing the opportunity for that reimbursement, I guess, it sounds like. Or, anyway, might be something for us to discuss.
Okay. Sounds good. We didn't know, you know, I did, I, I will say, I didn't know the level of what that needed to be or how much empty pipe had to be available for that. But since we've seen that, the, the reading doesn't seem to be coming in quite right. That's something that the fellows need to look at. quite right. That's something that the fellows need to look at.
We got to move on if there's nothing else for public works.
Thank you for an excellent report, Melissa.
Yes.
Can you just tell us, is your conference going well? Are you getting inspired by other cities and city managers?
Yeah, um, yeah, I got here today and the first one was talking about, um, I had it in front of me here, but it's basically leading in times that, uh, that are of uncertainty. And so I thought that was really good, and it mostly talks about in building teams, you know, building a culture of, you know, having, having, um, clear, honest feedback, which is always something that we're trying to do. Um, we're not the only ones in this, in the same boat. I mean, we see lots of people here that are having, um, and municipalities that are having issues with housing, that are having issues with water, that are having issues with, um, you know, failing infrastructure. So Port Orford thankfully is not unique in that. Um, and it's, it's just always good to get people together who are working on the same sorts of problems and to network with them. So these are all new people to me. I've not worked with these folks. Um, you know, it's just, it, I still just continue to learn, lean in and try to, um, take the problems as they come, and then hopefully building a network here of people that I can, um, get to know, and that way I can call if I need them. So I think, um, in that way, it's very, very important. And they have really good stickers and things, and so I'll hold up one that, um, I saw for Pat that says, "I became a mayor for the money and the fame," which obviously is how that is, because we, although I would say the money's not very good. And then this I'll bring back for each of you too, but it says, "City councilors are magical," with a magical, um, unicorn, so.
Under the, under the thought process of being open, I, it's kind of out of my bounds because I'm the mayor. I, I do have some experience with public works, and this is something that my father, who was pretty good with hydraulics, has mentioned to the city for about 20 years now. As we work on Dede Street, we might want to consider putting a check valve in along the way so that that water can't get sucked back. It's kind of a, a mechanical fix for that exact problem. Not really my place to say anything, I just won't be able to sleep tonight if I don't throw out there that we should mention that a check valve might help a lot with that process, since we're going to be changing out the pump anyways.
Noted.
Hank. Uh, any questions for Hank?
No, just thank you guys, uh, for working with us on that, uh, union contract. We appreciate that.
Appreciate the patience through the.
Yeah.
The rough seas we may have experienced. All right, planning, I think we had a fairly good report, but is there more?
Can I also, can I also interject something about the police with that? I really appreciated the follow-through that happened with that whole organization, uh, with our people of trying to get the speed monitoring and to move that multiple places, and then the time that was taken to write the report and to do all that. I really thought that they, um, really hit a home run on that, and they did a really nice job of following through on something that was, um, community-led, and that is what community policing is. And so I just really want to kudo them, um, in public for that, so thank you guys.
I wanted to actually thank you for reminding me about that, Melissa. I wanted to ask, Hank, is there an opportunity to make a, a public version of that? Just since it was brought by the community to us, just so that everybody can understand what the findings were?
We'll make it happen. I'm not sure how. I'll have to give it some thought.
Can that company give us a date?
To make it simpler. I want to make it simple when I give it to the public to not open too many doors of questions, because it was actually pretty simple the way it ended up. What you guys saw that Andrew created was a lot simpler than what actually came to us as a result of all the places it was sitting. So I'll have to give it some thought. I can, we can make it happen, one way or another.
Just, it's just because a lot of people came to, you know, were interested in that, so it seems like it would be great to show the outcome.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Sure.
Melissa? Cool. Thank you, Hank.
Thank you.
Mayor's report. Planning report, good, that gives me another minute. What do you got, Joseph?
Uh, just two hopefully quick things. First off, there is a vacancy, still a vacancy on the planning commission, and I just wanted to bring that up during the liaison report. Uh, second, um, we might need to schedule a special session for either the last week of October or one of the first weeks in November. Uh, I am going to a training next week about FEMA flood planes, and it seems like we might need to take some action, or the city council might need to take some action prior to December 1st, uh, in order for us to remain in good standing. Um, I just realized that today though, so I don't have too much more information, uh, but I will keep you all updated, uh, moving forward on that.
Thanks for that.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you.
Oh, mayor's report. What are we doing? I guess we've been working on the evaluation sheet. That's pretty close wrapped up. I've been chugging along. We, uh, I've been working on like a parting letter that hopefully will get wrapped up by the next month to kind of sum everything up. Kind of pretty, just happy with everything that's going on. I think the evaluations will be good. I think it's a good tool. Um, it'll be good to get a new council in here, so the transition will be, you know, try to make that as smooth as possible. Hopefully we get the negotiations kind of wrapped up, which we made a big step towards today. Uh, yeah, so I guess I should add more, but my brain's pretty shot this week, so there you go.
I think it'd be great at some point, you know, we'll talk about this of just think about, yeah, the transition things or, um, to the next council, things that you reflect on and want to make sure you convey to us, I would certainly.
I know, I'm just trying to make it sweet is the problem, so.
They have like the both versions, the sweet version and the.
You guys know about the good stuff, but that's just other part of it. Yes, for sure. And that, you know, and, and talking about this owning with planning, and that's going to probably be part of the main gist of my letters. I've been here for 10 years and just trying to get the most basic of planning stuff done, the checklist and what we're doing, and hopefully we can kind of, like, get together with planning on that and be like, okay, guys, we're getting really spread out here. Maybe we can kind of get back to the basics with the new council, everybody get on the same page, and then just start chugging along from, from square one, because we're making all these rules, but we're still not making sure that the most basic ones are being complied to. And so it's like, that's great that we have new rules, but we got to do it as a, as a, as this all-incompany thing, and it should start in the basement, like, from the checklist, just like the evaluations, just like the employee stuff. We got to have a, a backbone to be able to do anything, and, and, and we're close. We're gaining on it every day, and we haven't been in a spot to where we have had the luxury to, to gain on stuff. We've just kind of been holding the line. So hopefully this, with, with the staffing changes we have and with the, the fresh new faces, we'll be able to get back to the basics. I'm just going to be an angry person that's going to get three minutes to talk to you every month, but.
We've been, we have been talking about doing a work session on like enforcement of stuff for quite some time, but we just haven't had, as you said, we just haven't been able to pull it off.
And that starts with those basic backbone. You can't really argue with these rule sentences, you know, because there's so much gray, it's the nature of it. But there's good stuff going on, and there's good stuff going on in that port too. Counselor Webb, do you have anything?
Yeah, um, you know, there's just so much going on. What, what I would recommend, and, and not to diminish my capabilities, but go to the Port of Port Orford website and just take a look, and, and all of the projects are, you know, on there, they're, they're shown, they're explained, and there's, there's just, I, it's really kind of hard to put into words how much is actually going on there. For, for example, the NOAA has come out with a national seafood strategy, and, um, in it, NOAA provides four bullet points, and one of the, the first one's something like the support the Gulf, Gulf Coast and then South Atlantic shrimp, uh, shrimp fishing, and another one's, um, support Alaskan, uh, seafood values or something of that nature. And then there's a third, and, um, I can't, oh, it's a, the third is the north, northeast. And then there's a fourth bullet point, and it says, "The port, the port of Port Orford," and it's redevelopment project. And, and what that really demonstrates is, is how much, uh, NOAA is actually looking at Port Orford as a model, and they see what we're doing and they're beginning to adopt our strategy as a national strategy. And so you'll see a lot of federal support coming into, into the port over the next several years, and the way granting works, you know, building upon each other, I, I, I would suggest that you could look at a, a decade of, of just very, very positive motion, uh, in, in a direction that is, some might not even understand quite what's going on there yet, but, is, that, just go to the website, go to the website, take a look, spend some time. You may hear some things on the street, you know, and, you know, take that with a grain of salt and take a look for yourself. And, um, if anybody has any specific questions, they could, you know, reach out to me and, and I'd answer if I could. If I couldn't, I'd find somebody who could for you, and that's, that's about it. Thanks, Pat.
To put it in perspective, today I had a meeting with a representative from Wyden's office, Merkley's office, the head of the Ports Association with Business Oregon, and one of the head people of Business Oregon, and that's what we talked about. With, uh, our dredging emergency was the main thing, but just, and all the key players know about this, you know, and they have for a while, but now being recognized by NOAA for the National Seafood Strategy. It's like, all these, you know, this, this, people are hard on the, the port, because we've been going for this redevelopment for quite a while. But you have a group of five elected officials, which we know is winning a popularity contest, that have gotten close to this point of, of we're asking for $14 million for this seafood hub redevelopment right now. And it's actually a really good thing that it took how it did, because all these new opportunities and initiatives have, have, you know, are going on right now, so the time is now. And I will remind everybody once again that there is bare minimum 25 successful businesses in the heart of Port Orford sitting down there that are bringing in 25 or 30% of the local economy. So the more that we can help build up the port and that initiative, it's going to help the whole city exponentially with tourism and just having, if we get half of the stuff going, even the new cranes and the supplemental seawater system that the port has going on right now, it's going to change things, so. It's really exciting stuff.
Yeah, maybe even, I would throw out there, just for the lazy, lazy ones out there, the new project that, that the seafood, the seafood hub, um, that includes a community kitchen, which might be hugely beneficial to, um, you know, individuals, uh, from the community for all sorts of purposes. And, you know, it'd be a certified, a certified kitchen, so that they might be able to, um, you know, embark on their own, uh, profiteering. So there's just, there's just so much going on, I can't even, yeah, okay. And, and Pat, I have to get off to, uh, leave the meeting now.
Okay.
And is there anything that's on?
Oh, I think the only thing is, uh, I got to remember to add the audit, uh, correction plan. I didn't do that at the start of the meeting, and that's a total. It is, it's in the packet, but did I add it to an agenda? Okay, that's, so I need to add that after we're done. Okay, Brett, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Joseph has his hand up. He's behind you.
I believe that the discussing of the audit was put into the financial, uh, report.
No, you, yeah, the paperwork did, but I didn't say, oh, when we do additions to the agenda.
Uh, finance, if you go to the agenda under finance, it says attachment plus audit.
Yes, sir. I agree with you 100%. What I'm saying is when I was doing amendments to the agenda, I should have put, uh, 12B, you know, like we put it, the possible decision from the historical, I should put 12B, uh, corrective action plan for the audit, just so it's on the, so. Yeah, but it's technically going to be, yeah, we are doing it right now, but it's going to be 12C, not 12B, because we had a 12B that we didn't use. Doesn't make sense, but it does to me, so that's what we're going with. On to the rest of our liaisons. Uh, Counselor Baske is out, uh, for the school report. Um, Counselor Tidy, Fire District. Watershed, Belice's, you have a report in front of us.
I, I did.
Update.
I did turn this in, I have to say. But, um, yeah, just a real quick thing, we are, um, we submitted finally a grant last Friday to, um, get funds to dredge our reservoir. So to me, I feel like we've been on this path for like so long to get our reservoir dredged, so that was like a big push to get that in. And, uh, so hopefully, uh, that will be something we will get. We might have to provide a little bit more information because of difficulties with it, but, uh, or of those kind of grant complexities, but that's pretty exciting. We also had a really good meeting last week with Civil West and CCD to both talk about the Culvert, um, project, and also to start working on the BRIC grant, uh, what they call RFI's, requests for information, which are kind of complicated, so we got, so anyway, that's in progress, productive, and, uh, anyway, and today I went to a watershed workshop that was held over in the library. A whole bunch of people came to Port Orford, bought some great food at Cafe 2.0, uh, they're hosting these events here, and a lot of people come, so it's kind of cool. And we're always, uh, yeah, like the pioneering city, everybody's psyched that we, uh, about the watershed stewardship or work we're doing as part of, um, taking care of our water quality, which of course, the key thing to remember is it saves us money to start, uh, to have better quality water, as higher quality water as we can flowing into our system. So that's kind of what that's all about. So anyway.
Less the dredge.
Less the dredge.
Less the dredge, if the water's better.
Yep.
And you just made me remember, a few years ago, there was an entity that was willing to give the city money for grant writing.
Right.
That was in the middle of a rough spot.
Yep.
So it makes me wonder with, you know, discussions like this and that, if we need to get a list going of like the four or five top ones, and maybe go back to that entity with a solid plan of this is what we have, and this is a ballpark of what it would cost, are you still interested? Because we're in a spot where we could actually, you know.
You know, the thing is, Pat, that like, for example, a lot of these grants so far, we've been able to get help with, like CCD has basically done that for us and other entities. And so really, it's like, it's the backend, it's the, I mean, the grant writing part, not that, not to sniff at it, and I mean, we've paid Civil West to help us in some of likes, because some of these are real like engineering heavy. Um, but it's the backend that I think we're still getting a grip on, which is how much staff time does it take to, to get some of this stuff together? And I think having, yeah, so.
Right. No, and I think, and I personally think that, that's human nature to get hung up on that, and you don't think about the money you're saving. Like, or like, oh, this is the last end of getting this grant money. This is just a function of it. You think of like the time of 40 hours for an employee. Oh, we're burning time and $3,000, but yeah, we're doing it for a $50,000 project, or say, I mean, that's what we're here for, is to high-grade these things and priorities change.
Absolutely, and we have to do it. I mean, that's what I was saying the other day. I kind of feel like we got to figure out how to make that part of what we do regularly, so.
I'm sure you'll nail it within six months. All right, thank you for that. Parks, Tidy.
Uh, we didn't have a meeting, but we had, uh, some talks, and next month we'll bring to, uh, we want to put a, like a willow fence up around sort of like the playground area, just like a barrier.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be all natural and everything else, so we'll bring a plan probably to the next meeting. We'll have our, our parks meeting, and then we'll bring it to you guys next month. And then we're trying to also get the, uh, a couple more bids for the back nine, for the Porter for disc golf course, so that's it.
Did you hear about the golf thingy they're doing for Halloween?
Oh, yeah, Halloween, next Saturday, we're doing a disc golf tournament for Halloween. Forgot about that, yeah. Sorry, been busy. Uh, yeah, the October 28th, um, 10 a.m. in the park.
Awesome.
Yeah.
I actually have another thing to add that you may not have heard yet, but I know from Melissa, which is on, at your next parks meeting on November 7th, that the, uh, community building, the architect is going to come and make a presentation. And, uh, it's going to be a big community, it's going to be open to the whole community to come and learn about what's going on with that renovation and what the plan is and all that kind of stuff. And we're that, we're working with the community building friends group, and so they're going to publicize it, but they reached out to Brian and, or they're coordinating with him, so.
Thank you. I'll, I'll be online for that meeting.
Okay, TLT. TLT.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, you're TLT. Yeah, but he's got his hand up. Do you want to get him first?
Uh, I'm just giving a friendly reminder, a few months ago, during one of the TLT liaison reports, uh, Counselor Pogwitz, you requested that I remind you to try and schedule a meeting for sometime near December for the TLT to. Councillor Pogwitsch, you requested that I remind you to try and schedule a meeting for sometime near December for the TLT to reconvene. And figure out which of the projects have uh finished their projects and which ones haven't, so you can inform Melissa who she needs to send letters to.
Correct, but have we received any reports from any of the entities?
Um, I believe, I'll have to double check, uh, but I believe most of, if not all of them have submitted receipts for all of the projects. So, and the, I believe the totality of the funds, uh, there's only one that I need to verify whether or not they've submitted.
Okay. Thank you. And as far as TLT goes, I just had a question from Susan Russell on Main Street regarding the. Travel brochures that they hand out and the little maps and guides and all those things that include basically everything in town, including the port.
Good, good, good.
Anyway, they've run through their five thousand, so she asked if she could reprint, and I told her that that fell under her. Main Street advertising, so yes, she can use that funds to reprint more brochures to hand out, so. They'll have them to hand out to people. I can't remember, uh, I think Gary's report says thirty a day. There, yeah, they're seeing quite a few folks, so hopefully, you know, those visitors are spending money in town and that's what we want.
And those pamphlets are real handy, um, I give them out at the gallery, and so every business is kind of supporting. All the businesses.
Yeah, we hand them out to every guest that come in, comes into the park, uh, you know, if they're only staying one night, sometimes if it doesn't seem like they're going to unhook. We won't, but typically, if they're two, three nights, we always get a brochure out to them. And some of the folks actually eat three meals a day out, so when they come, so it's kind of cool.
Takes me so much time to X everything out but the port and cafe gym, although it's almost worth it anymore, I'm glad they're getting new ones. Okay, we are on to Main Street.
So I have nothing to add to the Main Street, if there's any questions.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Gary? Thank you for the report.
Thanks for the good work, Gary.
And I do have one thing to um say about the emergency group. I recently started meeting with Carol Archie, who um. In her career, um, worked on branding, and she did a lot of branding up in Beaverton. And um, she's going to work on branding the uh emergency program. And it's going to be a real leap, I feel.
You mean like?
Like logo.
Branding cattle, or do you mean like?
Like a logo and it's, she's got a whole like process of plugging our information in. And uh sorting out goals and visions and things that could be used for grants and it's. Pretty big deal.
That's the kind of volunteer you want to have.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
So I'm pretty, pretty tickled about it, so, yeah.
Awesome. Okay, so that concludes the liaison reports. Old Business, twenty twenty-four dash eleven, where is that in the packet? I'm not seeing it in.
What are you looking for?
The twenty-four, twenty-four dash eleven.
Oh, uh, all right, um.
In Old Business, all I have is the the new thing.
For the audit?
The C item, we don't have anything else, none of us have it.
Right, yeah, we didn't have, so, okay, but, okay, so tell me what the community building is about. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, if we take a brief recess, I can get the materials to all the councillors.
Okay, because I got a little weirded out granting our own right away from it, but that's okay, I mean, I I see the merit of it too.
This isn't about the striping.
No, this is community building.
It's about, we just have to make, go through the formality, because there's going to be like a new front and sidewalk kind of.
Oh, right.
Right, and so because of the public check-in of it is why we have to.
I make a motion to, should we take a break, make a motion to take a five minutes?
Ten minute, oh, yeah, seven minute, yeah, seven minutes.
I should be able to do it in seven minutes.
I know I saw that document, so it's on law, it's online, correct?
Yeah, probably was in the.
I believe I emailed it out, I just didn't know what got in the package.
Oh, it's, don't worry about it.
This conference will now be recorded.
You can do it from there, obviously. You got a mouse, okay, I was like, yeah, some fancy computer, but it's a wireless mouse.
I know, it is the fancy computer, well, that's why you guys pay me the big bucks.
We need a new mouse so bad. Or a battery, um, okay, so we are on Old Business. A eleven A, Resolution twenty twenty-four eleven, uh, with our adjustments in front of it, I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four eleven, updating uh Code thirteen point oh four oh eight oh. Collection procedures as written with the following percentages adjustments.
And is that the question that we have up against this, is what those percentage adjustments are?
Yeah, uh, may I?
Yeah, please do, I guess.
Hold on, we need a second before we.
Second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, then we'll just have to amend it when we get the percentages.
So um, I went through and updated the collection procedures using what I had heard at the discussion last month. Uh, the quick changes are adding full-time resident to the, to the wordage. So this is really only applicable to people who live in town full-time or who use this as their primary address. Uh, I clarified that end usage under the base rate will be billed at the base rate, so we don't have people being charged extra if they use less than that amount. Um, I clarified in the thirteen oh eight oh three oh, which is the sewer adjustment, that uh. The breaks, uh, so the sewer adjustment will be handled on a case-by-case basis, so if it breaks in the yard, they can get a refund for all the overage. Because they didn't put anything down the drain, but if they have a leak in the shower, then some of that obviously went down the drain. So case-by-case basis.
Shower story, that's the pictures for sure.
And then uh what I was thinking for the adjustment of the formula, so we could make it so people were getting a reasonable. Right, uh, adjustment with people who use less water, getting a larger adjustment was just sort of doing a scaling uh return. The one I have written in here is twen- uh, basically you'd get a seventy-five percent return if you use less than the base rate. A fifty percent return if you use between the base and five thousand gallons, uh, a thirty-five percent return if you do between the five and ten thousand. Twenty percent return if you do between uh ten and twenty, and then you only get ten percent back if you use more than twenty thousand gallons. Uh, so we incentivize people to use less water, uh, and then another document I handed out to you is a chart where I did. Uh, sort of a mock-up, uh, if someone had a catastrophic leak of fifty thousand gallons, I put in if their regular use was fifteen hundred. Twenty-five hundred, fifty-five hundred, eleven thousand, and then twenty-five thousand, and sort of broke it down by what the different percentages would be. Uh, B is the one that I have already put in there, I thought that one seemed the most, most reasonable. Sorry if that's a little mathy for, for people.
You mean B, category B is what the, what people would have to pay?
Uh, so category B would be um.
Refund, or what they, what they get back.
What they get back, so if someone uses uh fifteen hundred gallons and they have a fifty thousand gallon leak. Their bill would be one thousand sixty-five dollars over what it would normally would be. Under B, they would get about eight hundred dollars back, but if that, you know, same person instead used fifty-five hundred gallons. Or, yeah, fifty-five hundred gallons, they'd only get three hundred and fifty-one dollars back. Partly because they're getting less back because they use more, and partly because their bill isn't as much over because they typically use more water. So I have the bill differ- uh, the different usages, the bill differences, and then broke, have broken it down by category. I wasn't sure what the council thought would be fair returns for typical usages.
Is there any angle that's, that's discriminating against high-water users? Like splitting up these percentages, are we making it different for different people?
I think that's the way the fee structure is already, and that's like a very, isn't that a very typical thing in like water stuff?
Yeah, for the charging, so I guess the forgiveness is the same.
Charge more people.
Follow the same formula in a sense.
Yeah, just the opposite way of it. So I guess, I mean, if you guys do wrap your head around that, the amendment would be just as presented. Then you, you obviously spent some time working out those numbers and the formula is not too hard, like it's the formula a lot easier than it was before. So that you feel, like your math, you, you, you're, your math brain, you feel like anybody could take this formula and plug it in.
Yes, it's a lot easier because it's just basically how much more did you get charged than you should have? And then times it by a percentage, and that's how much you get back.
And that is something that we can put on the leak relief form, so that it's clear, like spelled, just so it saves you guys and everybody time. So that, and that's my main question is, this is relatable to a layman to, to, to where they can work it out, or at least it's on paper.
We have a leak relief form, I don't think I've seen that.
Uh, internally in the office we do, so we can calculate out the amount we would get. The one that we have right now, I believe, is eight or nine step calculation, that takes it down to like a two or three step calculation.
That's what, that, because.
I did have one other question, just because this week I had the question and it was sort of hard to figure out, how do we know who is. Uh, full-time resident versus people who are not full-time residents, is that something that's?
Well, so full-time doesn't actually necessarily mean full-time, it just means uh most of the time resident. Um, at least, I believe legally that's the case, um, the big thing would be whether or not they are able to vote in this jurisdiction. Uh, and thankfully, we live in a small enough town that we, we know who lives here most of the time and who doesn't, so.
And and then they, and the nature of the leak too, like that conversation started because somebody had a tree branch fall on a, on a hose bib. And they lost like sixty thousand or six hundred thousand, and then they came back to us and wanted us to forgive it, it's like, sorry, you're not here, you need to turn your water off when you're not here. So that nature will, you know, people are going to call and be like, because you have to say how the water broke or where the water broke and, and uh.
And we've had that happen, because they can't come to council to appeal your charge of four, at least my case. But, you know, I mean, if they don't have a shut-off valve, they don't have a shut-off valve, uh, so.
Do we have wordage in here?
Property off if you leave.
It, it, yeah, the, the reason I was asking about that though is, well, so you would just, this thing, if, if they're a full-time resident. That the proof of that is just kind of like common sense, it's not like we don't keep track of like by water bills. So this person uses a bunch of water in these three months and they don't use water in the other months or anything like that.
Uh, that could be one way to do it, um, now that we've been talking about it a little, if we wanted to remove the restriction of full-time uh resident. We could instead change the wordage to something along the lines of if this happened during an extended absence or an extended vacancy of the property. Uh, and the water was not shut off beforehand, you will not be entitled to a, to a refund.
That might be a better way to do it, and I, and I'm here, so I think we want to be fair to everybody, and. You could call a person that owns a vacation rental in STR, that doesn't live here, you could call them not a full-time person. But they do pay the water and sewer bills in the city, so they should be able to get the credit, just like.
Because the customer's a customer.
Yeah, exactly, so I think, yeah, if they don't shut their water off, there's no room for a credit, in my opinion. If they're here six months, gone six months, they don't shut their water off.
That's on that.
Yeah, okay. And that, but then the wordage would be, you know, because the, the is, is like, if you're not there to see your water leak. If you're not there for a couple of months, then, then why should we have to pay for that extra month between reads?
Because everybody, the whole town is paying for it.
So is there wordage in there that's strong enough saying that we only do this on a month-by-month basis, do you feel? Like, because, because that's what I don't want, is somebody coming in like, oh, I haven't checked my water bill in a couple of months because I don't live here and it's six grand, you know?
Now, I'll tell you, having a leak in the past myself, month-to-month always doesn't work, because sometimes.
Oh, it happens.
Like the last eight days of the.
Oh, so sixty days, I guess. Yeah, because, because of that, but.
Sometimes you don't know in thirty days, because it have, if it happens the last five days of one, one month, and then you don't get your bill till the twenty-fifth of the next month.
And I think that's an important piece of this puzzle.
Yeah.
Because I agree with you, a customer is a customer, and, and it would probably give the opportunity, if we have this policy. To somebody to argue it and make it more work than it's ever would be worth to have that conversation.
I agree.
Right, right.
Well, but the question remains, though, then, like, what is the evidence, like, if I, I, you, you actually said it, I think, really well, right off the top of your head of like, you know. If somebody's, if the leak occurs when, however you said it, when there's been an extended absence and the water hasn't been turned off. But like, how would we, how would that be verifiable? I guess you would, you could look at the water.
Because they report it, they're the ones that report it, so like, first line, if you do not report this within sixty days of finding out about it. Then, then, you know, which I, I mean, and we, I don't think this is one that we need to feel pressured on. I want to talk about it a little bit, and this is one of the big points, and if we have to work it a little bit, and you clear, you know, define that, that you know now that we're good with those percentages. Then, then we can still gain, what other big stuff is, but is that wordage, is sixty days okay?
I think you know within sixty days, at least I have when I've had a leak.
Yeah.
But it's taken that next month to get it, because, you know, you just, if with five days, you might just sink fast.
And I'm.
We use a little bit more water.
So when we read meters, I imagine, you know, when you have an egregious leak, are you kind of reading meters?
City's never called me in twenty years with a leak.
They used to do it, Patty used to do it, she called.
That's where it happens, and that's.
I always.
That, well, that's because in that program, there should be a high read report, where you have the parameters of anything over twenty-five or thirty percent.
And it can't.
It's out of report, yeah, so that's one of those things that, like tech valves, you know, I just gotta keep pushing on it, yeah, it's just one of those tools, so.
I, I was away on vacation once, and we got the call from the city, and it was like, you are having a massive leak, and it was like, oh my God, so I got to call my neighbor to go over and, you know.
Shut the water up, yeah, and that's the other side of the water conservation that I hope that we can, that we can improve on. Is us being conscientious and saying, hey, you, you used twenty thousand extra gallons from last month, is everything okay? It's customer service.
And it's a little bit harder in my case, because I'm commercial, so it's different.
You can have one of the fifty people leave a hose on that, you know, like those in the Seaco uh RB park, they're, they use like. Two hundred fifty thousand extra gallons, so we look all over and it's this hose full on full bore under an Escalonia hedge, just. Like, and I heard it from like ten feet away, it's like, oh, there it is, must be boiling out of the gun, and it's like, no, it's a hose stuck next to this guy's house. So, and that, yeah, so you can lose two hundred fifty thousand gallons in a month from a hose on top of the ground and it soaks down in around here.
Um, so a couple uh answers to some, yeah, a couple of clarifications. Uh, so first off, we do already have a provision on a time limit in here, in order for an adjustment to be made, application for adjustment must be made within three months of the billing in question. Or within three months of the effective date of the section, whichever is later, uh, we can reduce that to two months if the council wants to, um.
I think three months makes it cumbersome, but two months makes it so it's measurable.
Yeah, I mean, because we got to remember, we're giving people the opportunity, I don't want to say we're doing them a favor, but it's not like we're required to do this. It's just common sense and nice not to charge somebody for sewer if it's not going into our system.
Uh, second clarification, um, someone who turns on, who kept a hose on would not actually be able to apply. Because uh part of the restriction or the application process, and two is showing evidence that there was a leak and that it has been fixed. So uh the hose instance would not be um applicable for uh an adjustment. Um, but I can get all of these uh in there, and since this is an ordinance, it needs two readings before it's effective, so. Um, I can either bring this back next month for another first reading with the revisions, or we can just move ahead, uh, depending on how the council.
Can we do two readings in one meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, so let's do that, is there any other adjustments that we need just Joseph to come back with that you guys are thinking?
I, I'm still a little bit unclear, the question I was asking is about evidence, and the only reason I'm asking about this is because of just knowing. That people come in and get into arguments about what's going on, and so having kind of, just wanting to make sure we get pretty clear criteria of what.
So Keely can really just say, this is.
What counts for like, if somebody says, oh, you know, like if you have been away for an extended absence and you're, I mean, somebody could just come in and say, well, no, I wasn't. You know, or like, how do we?
That's why we changed it to the sixty days instead of the extended absence.
So the water, the water use is the proof, in my opinion.
Okay.
Because, in my opinion, if somebody's running five thousand a month, and then all of a sudden they run twenty thousand, there's your proof. You know, if they've got a back history of three years running five thousand, and all of a sudden they run twenty thousand, you can't. You can't misuse twenty thou- or fifteen thousand gallons of water. It's, it's something broke that's leaking twenty-four seven for however many days it's in behind it. And it's a terrible feeling for a person that has a leak.
I believe so.
Like, like you know.
It just happened to me.
So basically, she would uh run a report, I mean, if there's any question.
Yes, well, yeah, they got to run this. Yes. Well, yeah, they got to run this report to come up with these numbers to give the adjustment anyway.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
In my opinion, I mean, we can make it, we can make them take a before and an after picture of the break or whatever. It, uh, my suggestion is the, the, the overuse is the proof.
Just wondering, because I'm, that's like a question.
Cause they can only do it once a year.
Or, you know, be very clear about it.
Oh, I think it's once a year.
That's what I just asked Joseph was to clarify that, because that, that's the business. And if they get us, one out of a hundred people get us for once a year, then that.
Exactly.
Then you eat it.
And the thing is, is if you, if your bill was two thousand gallons one month and it was twenty-eight hundred the next. Even if you had a leak, you may not turn it in because you, you wouldn't want to use your one leak on eight hundred gallons.
Yeah. And that's why it's important for it to be in there once a year, because then people won't think, oh, like I have an old rickety galvanized water system under my house. They'll get a couple of hundred gallons here, a couple of hundred gallons there.
What if you, what if you, since we're just talking about these examples, what if you did turn one in and then like next month you had a much bigger one? Could you go back and say, I would like to re.
I don't know.
No, no.
I don't think you can.
Have a, like, if you have a bad system, like you have a break, it's like a root or something, or you just, oh my gosh, I have an old galvanized fitting. That is just crustified way. At that point, you know that your system is in repair and you have been warned, you know what I mean? So in my opinion, that's why.
It's not always that case. It's, we had a woman in a gypsy van that played those bowls. She stayed at our park for three nights. She came in after playing the bowls down at the Six's River. This is a true story. She backed into the water pipe backing into her side. It was like nine-thirty at night. It was dark. It was in the winter. It was raining.
Yeah.
Somebody called me like four hours later and said, I'm walking my dog and there's water pouring down the driveway and all. So it ran for like four or five hours after she hit it.
There's an extra.
So it's one of those things where that kind of an accident happens. So it's sometimes not always the property owner's fault. It's a tree branch could fall on a, a spigot in your yard. I mean, we can go on and on and on about it.
Well, so do we need to put something in there that said special circumstances can be brought to council?
And I think there is an appeal process because we've had them come.
That's, yeah, yeah. So we need to make sure that there's, but we don't want, you know. I mean, we want to have that administrative decision as clearly as possible, but for those kinds of instances, like you're talking like. Cause we can't write every angle into here. This is. An opportunity to.
Raccoon chewed. It could happen. They chew holes in roofs.
No, and that's, and then, and then, yeah, okay. So you had a leak in, on December fifteenth. And then you had another one on January fifteenth. It's not a year apart, but it's two separate years. So yeah, the city eats it. Sorry, move on with our day. Like, that's the kind of thing we could sit here and talk about.
Right.
For a long time. What else do you need, Joseph?
I've been holding my hand for so long, I need to double check. Oh, so, uh, one of the points that Commissioner Pogwitt or Council Pogwitt brought up, uh, wouldn't be applicable. One part of the, uh, criteria here is that it needs to be at least two hundred percent of the, uh, consumption at the same time the previous year or so. Someone only using eight hundred extra gallons wouldn't, wouldn't meet that criteria. But, uh, other than that, I'd just like to make sure, uh, things that the council would like me to bring back is re, uh, reducing the three month. Uh, from a billing down to two months. Change full-time resident, uh, to the thing about, uh, you won't, it won't be applicable if, uh, there has been an extended vacancy and you didn't turn your water off. Along with establishing some criteria for how we can verify that there has been a vacancy.
Meter reading.
Uh, yeah, uh, will probably be a meter reading. Verif, and then verify both that there is a once-a-year restriction in this and an appeal process somewhere else in the law code.
I think that's about as close as we can come.
Yeah, but we do, I don't know if we answered Ann's question. I think we kind of got sidetracked and I don't know if you got.
The proof?
Well, it sounds like you guys feel like if, if we have the water usage that shows, that demonstrates it, that you feel like that's a good enough thing.
Well, they have a history.
Well, and.
And they go back, they use that history to come up with the figure, right? That you're going to credit. So you would use that history too, to check back and just make sure this guy wasn't trying to pull your leg, I guess. I mean, at some point, we have to trust that people are honest. We know and we've seen that every once in a while, somebody tries to pull our leg, but we've tried to tighten this up where. If someone really wanted to pull our leg once a year, I guess they really could figure out a way to do it, but what are they going to do with the water? Do you see what I'm saying? So let's just say they use fifty thousand gallons and they're trying to pull our leg. What'd they do with the fifty thousand?
Not too many pools around, so they already can really do the one thing that.
You know, it's, it's more likely there's a mistake or there's a break or there's two breaks or whatever, um, but.
I've had mistakes.
But just the history of the meter readings can show a lot too, you know, to where you look back a couple of years. It's like, well, yeah, I know you used twice as much as last month, but historically through this timeframe, you'll always bump up, so.
Exactly.
It's your irrigation system because you're fine until you hit this, this month. So there's. I totally understand your, your question and your concern, but it, the whole thing is kind of an honor system thing and all we have is the data that we have. So if we go too far, then it's like we're setting ourselves up for arguments that we don't want our staff to have.
What I'm trying to do is actually make it clear so that the staff doesn't have to get into arguments. So it's like, really like, these are the criteria. Oh, you don't meet the criteria. Sorry, you know, or that's what I'm looking to figure out, so.
And if you have a problem with it, to come to council.
Which I can't see like, and that's, but I, that's why what Ann is saying is if let's make it to where we don't have to bring it to council. But.
But it sounds like what you guys are saying. And I, I did work on one of these with a citizen and the staff, Keely was able to run the, look at the water bills over the whole year and. And, and do what you're saying, look at it to, to see, um, what was happening. In that case, the person was actually letting water flow. Um, but anyway.
What was the reason for, oh, I think I remember, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, so there's, there are strange things that can.
Oh, yeah, there are.
Oh, yeah, like, um, they were never going to be able to, to. Put in black and white, anything to. Avoid all of those. So Joseph, do you have clear direction?
Yeah, I believe so.
Uh, Gary and Ann, I believe, could I get you to retract your first and second?
I'll retract my first.
I'm sorry, guys.
You're fine. No, you're good.
Okay, I gotta hurry up, get this last item done before seven-thirty. Um, okay, so you have clear.
Seven-thirty. Bad news at seven-thirty.
It is already. Oh, I thought I had a minute.
Got two more.
Oh, I got a minute. Okay, so we are on to new business twelve A, the right-of-way permit for the community building. Uh, Joseph just put that in front of you. And I don't like knee jerk, obviously things in front of us, but this kind of got lost. And let me ask you this, Joseph, do you know that it doesn't go outside the footprint of anything existing, does it?
Um, no, it doesn't. I remember that was part of the thing when we did the community building.
Right, it all is.
It's just construction indoor right-of-way, so they need.
Yeah, I believe, uh, Counselor Teddy is correct. I believe that, uh, the work that they're requesting to do right now is replacing existing. Infrastructure, not building anything new, uh, but since it is work that would be.
In the right of.
In the right of way, um, especially because this seems like something that could potentially be contentious. We wanted to make sure that it came to council to make sure that everyone had the choice.
Nature of it and everything, it's a.
And we have to, the, the, um, the architects really wants to make sure we get all the permits, because we have to kind of get through everything. And we have, we're on a timeline to spend the money.
This is a good use of a right-of-way.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's also going to be all like, this is all going to be, um, you know, ADA, so there's like going to be redoing the sidewalk and redo.
It's going to be a huge improvement.
You mean, I don't have to watch anybody fall at the festivals and the potlucks that they have in the community building.
You're not going to have to put a rock in the door.
See two people fall on those stairs. Scared me to death.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to accept the right-of-way permit for the community building that we're speaking of, if anyone was so inclined.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have first and a second. Now let's do some discussion on it. We already started. It looks like it's within the same footprint. And they're putting more concrete, you know, it's more ADA compliant. So is there any discussion on that?
I think it's really good.
I will call for the vote then. Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor Brens?
Yes.
Counselor Tidy?
Yes.
Counselor Pogwitt?
Tim, yes.
Okay, so now we're going to, twelve B was the historical preservation. We did not have an action item there. So we're going to move on to twelve C, which is the corrective act, action plan for the auditor. Uh, auditor is always a scary word, but this is just a part of the audit to where we say, uh, we've been. You know, we, these are the internal controls that we're using. We've gotten more staffed up and our procedures are going to be cleaner for the reporting. And that's going to be our corrective action to be more productive. Long story short, is what it is. Um, that was in your package, so hopefully you've had a, a chance to look at that. And I would also entertain a motion to accept the corrective active plan, action plan for the twenty twenty-three audit?
Yep, yeah, twenty twenty-three. And, and this is, it feels a little bit like putting the cart before the horse, because we haven't heard from the auditors on the twenty-three. We're working to get them scheduled for the November meeting, but the reason for this, just for clarity and transparency, is. When they, when the auditors turn their information in and their findings into the Secretary of State's office. We have thirty days in order to get this document, um, of what we are going to do, our action plan, back to them. And so we didn't want to have to call a special meeting and to have all of that. We wanted to get that in front of you, um, so that you could. Uh, see the changes that we have made and what our plans are and then, um, can move forward.
I would make a motion, um, for the plan of action for the city of Port Orford for the twenty twenty-three audit.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? When did Melissa get back?
He's never left.
Oh, uh, Counselor Tidy?
I'm good.
Counselor Bren, no, I need a.
Oh, yes. You didn't answer the questions. You, you were talking about.
Sorry, I was, I'm calling for the vote on the, uh, corrective action.
Yes.
Yes. It's Counselor Brens?
Yes.
Counselor Pogwitt?
Tim, yes.
Counselor Velisus?
Yes.
Okay, continuing action items. No, citizen concerns online? Citizen concerns online? Okay, counselors, you got anything?
Oh, next month I'll be virtually attending the meetings, so I won't, I won't be in the country, so that's it.
All right, have a great time.
I will.
Yeah.
I just wanted to bring up the idea at this point, um, of possibly thinking about in December, we had a conversation about maybe. Doing something like holiday-wise to appreciate our staff and community volunteers. And, um.
Yes, be the nineteenth, I'm sorry, be the nineteenth of December if we did the third.
Right. Yeah, I, I don't know about the timing or, but I just wanted to raise that idea. I mean, it seems like it's the end of a council. We're going to be losing to, uh, council. Or, I mean, our mayor and our council members, so it'd be nice to kind of just not to celebrate that, but to celebrate their contributions or, you know. And but particularly to, to celebrate, appreciate our staff and it just seems like. We've been through a lot in the past couple of years through this session and it would be really great to try to. Do something like that if we can pull it off. And I don't really know exactly what it would be, but, um.
Margaritas for everybody?
Now you're talking.
There you go.
Have to be stirred, stirred up whiskey.
But noted, okay.
But maybe we could be thinking about that and make a plan or figure out, I mean, I don't know. So anyway, that's just wanted to bring up to see if people were interested in that. And it might be the kind of thing where council members could maybe contribute some money to make it happen. I don't think we would want to take it from the budget.
That's the offers, but.
Yeah, but I mean, I think if we all pitched in twenty bucks or maybe twenty-five, I mean. I'm not talking about a huge thing. I'm just talking about something to.
A small gala. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be the nineteenth. Go ahead, Joseph, sorry.
I hate terrain on that parade, but Oregon is very strict about, uh, what constitutes like a, what the distinction between a gift and a bribe is. So the council is going to want to be very cautious with what they do to show appreciation.
Good. You guys can just give me high fives.
Maybe the one that.
Yeah.
Wanted to. That being said, food, food is okay, like having a meal or something like that is okay. It would be different if you tried to give everyone a gift card or something like that, but to create a meal, to share a meal. That's generally found to be okay.
Yeah, just wanted to bring that up, uh, before we got too much further down that damn idea.
Thank you. Yeah, I was thinking about, yeah, like food, some, yeah. Not that, not that you guys aren't worth something, but yeah, we can't do it, so.
Yeah. I mean, we do give them paychecks and stuff. I appreciate you.
I know in the past, the staff has, you know, had finger foods and box of chocolates in the office and stuff during the holidays and.
Those kinds of things. Yeah, we definitely want to figure it out. And we definitely heard what you said, and I think there's ways to do it.
I mean, we could either do a gathering and/or we could just share, you know, send, so anyway, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, I'm just. It could be anything.
And we can also authorize staff to get some nice winter jackets or something like that with our logo on it. You know, I mean, that's, that was always a standard for me in construction is here's your carhartt jacket. Thanks for your work.
Well, we just, they just did get those, so.
Oh, they got jackets too?
Well, they got sweatshirts.
Yeah, that's what you got, the sweatshirts in the back. I just think sometimes it rains too.
And that was from the Episcopal Church?
Yeah.
The local works also did get jackets. I'm not one hundred percent sure about that though.
Okay, good, but it's something that we all want to do, so we just have to figure out how to do it. We just have to be careful about the whole gift angle of it.
So maybe think about it and at the next meeting we can figure it out further or if anybody wants to take the lead on it, that would be great.
Sounds like also according to the mayor, we need to change our logo because there's not a lighthouse in Port Orford. And every time I wear the sweatshirt, I hear about that, so.
Well, you were new here. Maybe you just thought you hadn't seen it yet or something. I just look so much like the Kate Blanca one. But maybe, I mean, I can see where you would think there'd be one on either side, so no worries. I totally understand.
Yeah, yeah, super helpful, super helpful.
You know, I, the first time I had an opportunity to say anything about it is when I saw the sweatshirt come out of the box, so. But that's okay. You won't have to worry about that guy much longer.
In our house, we call those true but unhelpful statements.
Yeah, that's, I'm pulling out. Marissa doesn't call him that. She's got another word for it, but I think that's what she means. Okay.